Thank you and welcome to Greer City Council Meeting. This is a duly called meeting, held April the 23rd, 2024. We appreciate your attendance this evening. Having called the meeting to order, I would like to ask that Councilman Riley Bettis lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation for the council. If you would like, you can join us by standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for blessing us to be able to exercise our God-given freedoms this evening. Please, God, and direct us tonight to always act as you would have us act, to treat others just as we would want to be treated, and to always remember that the glory for anything we accomplish goes to you. Asking your continued blessings for our city, our state, and our country, I pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Well, as you can see, we've got a big meeting tonight and lots of items to go through, and so we will attend to that at this point. Again, we appreciate your support as we meet twice a month. Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that then, council, let's move to council meetings that need minutes approved, the first of which is April 9th, 2024. That was the workshop. Entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
And then that was followed by a regularly scheduled council meeting, April 9th, 2024. Oh, got ahead of myself. Yes. And I was going to thank Ms. Munoz for doing it and doing such a good job, and then I got mixed up, so. Let's try this again. April 9th, 2024 meeting was held as well, too. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved. Second.
Floor is open for any items of note for the clerk. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. With that then, let's go on to a special recognition, and I am sorry I didn't get down earlier to greet these folks. We have a great relationship and a very longstanding relationship with the Association of South Carolina and with the South Carolina Municipal Elected Officials Institute. This is an organization that provides services for municipalities across the state and helps us with our legislative agenda as well as day-to-day items that come up for cities big and small. And this is an organization that has provided for the city of Greer as well as the other 270-plus cities in our state on many, many occasions. And we look forward to those times when we are able to get together with other municipalities and the conferences that we have that keep us up to date, not only on legislative actions but on educational opportunities as well, too. And so this evening, I want to recognize or give special recognition to the 2024 South Carolina Municipal Elected Officials Institute for Government's Honor Role. Naomi Reed, who is the Field Services Manager with the Municipal Association of South Carolina, is here with us this evening to present the award, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. Thank you, council, Mr. Administrator, Madam Clerk. My name's Naomi Reed with the Municipal Association. I'm one of three field services managers with the association, probably most familiar with Charlie Barano, Ashley Callahan, and prior to me, Mr. Jeff Shaker. I started with the association in July, filling his shoes. I cover the upstate. I live just down the road here in Greenville, and so being over that territory was really convenient for me, being able to service the upstate. Like you said it best, Mayor Danner, I had a whole thing prepared, similar to what you said, so I know you have a lot of things to cover tonight, so I won't go into many details. But like you said, out of the 271 municipalities, 10 cities and towns have been named to the 2024 honor roll this year. So it just goes to show that each sitting council member here, through your service as an elected official and your dedication to education and training, it just shows your commitment to that and to your citizens here in Greer. And so on behalf of the Municipal Association, I'd like to say thank you for your service and present you with this award tonight.
The award goes to all of them, so it lets them sit up here in the middle and I will accept it on their behalf. And I... (applause) We don't give them. (applause) We don't give them. (applause) Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. (inaudible). Was it 10? 271? Pretty good. That doesn't make sense. This is, as you just heard, one of 10 cities out of 271. This is something that requires not only training but advanced training, and that means attending training sessions and institute institutional knowledge as well as a bunch of different areas. And it is a testament to this council that we have accomplished this and that we generally -- hmm, got a little echo -- that we generally have reached this even as we have had some turnover, not much fortunately, in our council, but to our newer council members, thank you for your participation in this as well. This is something that we are really proud of and think that it not only serves us as a council but you as citizens of the city as well. So thanks to the Municipal Association and the work that they do, and we thank you for the special recognition. Let's move on to the next item of business this evening, which is employee recognition. I hate to overuse the word, but again, this is a time that we really like to do this because this is the opportunity that we get to recognize those folks that have spent time with the city and have reached markers within their employment with the city that we think is of note. And what you will see is a wide range of time that they have been employed with the city, and that is always special for us to do as we honor those folks that have given of their time and their talents to make us a better place. And so we do that with a resolution that reads, and I'm going to read the resolution, and then I'm going to ask our administrator, Mr. Andy Merriman, if he will, to meet me up front, and we will award them their certificate of appreciation and a day off. So it reads, "A resolution recognizing and commending the city of Greer employees. And whereas the city of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees, and whereas Amber Chambers has served in the police department for five years, Max Liborets has served in the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department for five years, John Simmons has served in the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department for five years, James Pruitt has served in the Public Services Department for 10 years, Red Watson has served in the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department for 25 years, Brian Wilson has served in the Public Services Department for 25 years, and Tamala Duncan has served in administration for 35 years. Whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner, now be it therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Greer, South Carolina, in a meeting duly assembled wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for the distinguished and dedicated service which they have performed. Be it further resolved that the City of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and an administrative day off with pay. Approve this the 23rd day of April, 2024." And with that, Mr. Merriman, if you would join me up front. many of them were, and I got a Sunday morning text message from one of our citizens commenting on how clean downtown was Sunday morning following the festival. And my reply was that we are certainly proud of all our staff, but those that work often Brian Wilson. I hardly know him about, Brian. on weekends and overtime as they attend to the different festivals and events that we (laughing) I don't think 35 years is right. have downtown, and sometimes that means picking up some trash and doing a little cleanup (laughing) (applause) at night or over the weekend, and we are always appreciative of those efforts. And so with that, I want to tip my hat to those that may have been involved and were here this evening, and also to those folks that weren't able to make it, but hopefully if they're here that we recognize some people that might be passed along to them, that we appreciate the job that they did as well. So with that, (pause) let's do some more special recognitions. How about that? And so what I'm going to do is ask a whole bunch of people to come up here in the front and join me. I'm going to ask that the Riverside High School Girls Basketball Team and the Riverside High School Boys Basketball Team join me if they would here in the front. All right? I tell you what, ladies first. How about that? All right? Come on, ladies. This has been a big year for women's basketball, and we've seen it from high school all the way through college, and a great testament to the quality of basketball that has been played, even through the fact that this year's championship games, there was more viewers of the women's game this year than there were the men's. So you get to pat yourself on the back for being a part of that. But let's bring it a little bit closer to home and recognize the Riverside High School Girls Team. Riverside Girls Basketball Team kept off a historic season this year, finishing with a record of 21 and 8. This is the first girls' basketball state championship in school history. Give them a round of applause. On the road to winning the state championship, they won the region for the first time in 2010 with a region record of 7-1, and won the upper state championship, first time since 1993. The team led by three all-region players, Kendall Parski, who averaged -- Horsky? Parski?
Horraski.
Horraski? Who've averaged 18 points, three assists, and three rebounds, and three steals a game. She was very busy. Madison Farar? Yeah. Average 14 points, four assists, and six rebounds, as well as four steals a game, and Ellie Trickett? (laughing) Who'd average 13 points, eight rebounds. Ms. Parski? Or a Kuski? Was also all-state. They had -- and so give them a big round. So we've got a proclamation that will go to both the girls' and boys' team, and it says, "Whereas the city of Greer, the premier city in South Carolina, the live, work, play, and race family, the home of BMW's only North American manufacturing facility, Regal Park International, Spartanburg International Airport, and the South Carolina Inland Port, and from its very beginning, known as the home of dedicated coaches, selfless athletes, and champion athletic programs. Whereas the 2023 Riverside High School Girls Basketball Team finished a historic season, finishing with a record of 21 games, winning the region for the first time since 2010, with a record of 7-1, winning the upper state championship for the first time since 1993, capturing the team's first basketball state championship in school history." With that, I declare that Coach Jones and Coach Arnold and the members of the 2023 Riverside High School Girls Team shall forever be recognized as the city of Greer champions, and that they will inspire every citizen of Greer, particularly the little girls, to be the best versions of themselves possible, and that they will always be recognized as champions in the city of Greer, their home. And with that, I want to present this to y'all. (applause) Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Long term. (inaudible). All right, guys, give them a look. Hey, y'all gotta sing after y'all get done, so don't leave. Y'all have to sing before you're done, okay? (laughing) Who was your coach, guys? Who's your coach? Supposed to be a man of many words, isn't he? When we ask for some information about the girls' team and the boys' team, if we've got a few wrong write-ups about the girls' team, here's what we got from your coach. Record, 25 and 5. Region 7-1. Two A region champs, upper state champs, state runner-up.
I believe in them.
Brett, can we just...
That speaks for you, Brett.
Should I go tell her on the morning?
Okay, guys, so what's a halftime speech like? I mean...
We'll all get it.
Guys, we're certainly proud of y'all as well, too, and Miss Reed as well. Whereas the 2023-24 Riverside High School Boys Basketball Team compiled a 25-5 record, including 7-1 in the region, en route to a region 2-4-8 championship and an upper state championship, and a runner-up in the state championship. City of Greer believes that our community is one of the most valuable resources, is its young people, that the city of Greer is made up of talented people who work hard and sacrifice every day, hoping to accomplish something great for their families and for their neighbors and for their community, and that champions should be celebrated as a representation of the exceptionalism that runs through every resident of the city of Greer. Therefore, myself and the city council hereby proclaim Coach Jones, Plutch, Arnold, and the members of the 23-24 Riverside High School -- let's see now, is that -- that's not the girls' team. Okay. Coach Jones and the boys' team shall be forever recognized as the city of Greer champs, and that they will inspire every city of Greer president to be the best version of themselves possible, and that they will always be recognized, be recognized, for their home as the city of Greer. Gentlemen, thank you for representing us on that level, and good luck to you in the future. Thank you. (applause) Why didn't Reed play in that down-the-clock thing next year? Tell me if I've seen that far. Why aren't they gonna do it again? So bad, yeah. You know, they still play. I heard they were looking at it.
I was talking to one of the girls, what they're doing. They're still playing their 5A schedule, but when it comes time for players, the larger teams...
The gentleman right there beside you, he said he'd lead it, to your left. He said he was leading it. Yes. Makes it good, no? Come on, guys.
See you, man.
Good job.
Do what? Oh, dude.
Hey! Tell where you went out. I'm really using that.
Can't take them anywhere. Now we know a little bit about the halftime speeches. I got one more thing in here to go. that participate. We have got some really good high schools and certainly middle schools and elementary schools as well in the Greer community, and we appreciate each and every one of them for what they do and how they improve this community, and the middle college as well, too. And I'm sure I've forgotten others, but what a great group of folks and represent our city well. We've started a little sort of intermural play in terms of our football teams with Greer High and Riverside High, and that generates a lot of interest each year into who's going to be the winner of that game. And so we have a good time with our high schools, and they bring a lot to our town, both in recognition and in quality of life. And, you know, I'm going to show my age just a little bit, but when we asked Red Watson to come up a minute ago and celebrate 25 years with the city, I thought about -- I don't think I ever volunteer coached one of his teams, but certainly had boys the same age and watched them all grow up and play all kinds of different sports, both at the recreational level and at the high school level. And it's good to see these kids, some which will leave and settle other places and some that will stay in our community, and always good to see that come around. We've got one of our exceptional athletes sitting right here with us this evening, and we appreciate those folks that have done things while they were here in high school and went on to college careers and then came back to Greer and made this home. So always good to be able to do that. Mr. McAdie, I saw you sitting back there. Do you have a guest that you want to present to us this evening? If you'd like to come up here to the front. Have you got anybody that's here this evening from the Donald Trump family?
My knowledge, no members of the family.
Ready to come? Okay, well, I'm going to present this to you to present to them, so if you'd like to come to the front, that'd be great. Okay. Come right there. Okay, yeah. We recognize our clerk for her length of service this evening, and this is coming up on Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and we are participating in that with a proclamation. And it reads as such, "The position of municipal clerk is the only municipal staff role that is required by state law regardless of municipality size and/or form of government. And whereas all 271 cities and towns in the state are required to have a municipal clerk, and whereas the city of Greer has had a rich history of talented and dedicated municipal clerks, including Wilma Gosnell, who served as the municipal clerk for the city of Greer for 30 years, 1950s into the 1980s..."
I heard they were looking at it.
I was talking to one of the girls, what they're doing. They're still playing their five A schedule, but when it comes time for players, the larger teams...
Yeah. The gentleman right there beside you, he said he'd lead it, to your left, he said he would lead it. Yes.
Makes a good, yeah.
Come on, guys.
Hey, tell me you're going out.
Now we know a little bit about the halftime speeches.
Uh, I got one more thing in here to go. You know, it, um, it's good to celebrate champions as the girls and boys are and also all those that participate. We have got some really good high schools and certainly middle schools and elementary schools as well in the Greer community, and we appreciate each and every one of them for what they do and how they improve this community and the middle college as well, too. And I'm sure I've forgotten others, but what a great group of folks and represent our city well. We've started a little sort of intermural play in terms of our football teams with Greer High and Riverside High, and that generates a lot of interest each year into who's going to be the winner of that game. And so we have a good time with our high schools and they bring a lot to our town, both in recognition and in quality of life. And, you know, I'm going to show my age just a little bit, but when we asked Red Watson to come up a minute ago and celebrate twenty-five years with the city, I thought about, I don't think I ever volunteer coached one of his teams, but certainly had boys the same age and watched them all grow up and play all kinds of different sports, both at the recreational level and at the high school level. And it's good to see these kids, some which will leave and settle other places and some that will stay in our community, and always good to see that come around. We've got one of our exceptional athletes sitting right here with us this evening, and we appreciate those folks that have done things while they were here in the high school and went on to college careers and then came back to Greer and made this home. So always good to be able to do that.
Mr. McAdie, I saw you sitting back there. Do you have a guest that you want to present to us this evening? If you'd like to come up here to the front. Have you got anybody that's here this evening from the Donald Trump family?
My knowledge, no members of the family.
Ready to come? Okay, well, I'm gonna present this to you to present to them, so if you'd like to come to the front, that'd be great.
Okay.
Come right there. Okay, yeah. We recognize our clerk for her length of service this evening, and this is coming up on Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and we are participating in that with a proclamation. And it reads as such, the position of municipal clerk is the only municipal staff role that is required by state law regardless of municipality size and or form of government. And whereas all two hundred and seventy-one cities and towns in the state are required to have a municipal clerk, and whereas the City of Greer has had a rich history of talented and dedicated municipal clerks, including Wilma Gosnell, who served as the municipal clerk for the City of Greer for thirty years, nineteen fifty's into the nineteen eighty's. Whereas the City of Greer's current municipal clerk, Danny Dunn, has served the City of Greer for nearly forty years, playing a critical and varied role to support the mayor, city council. Whereas municipal clerks' responsibilities under state law include giving notice of meetings to council members and to the public, keeping minutes of its proceedings and performing the other duties. Regardless of city size, municipal clerks have seen their role and responsibility expanded with change. Whereas with advancements in software and hardware, municipal clerks have become increasingly better materials packets and to record meeting minutes of the records. Municipal clerks get their professional training from the South Carolina Municipal Finance Clerks Officers and Treasurers Association, an affiliate organization of the municipals. However, therefore, let it be resolved into the mayor of the City of Greer, the Greer Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the City. City of Greer recognizes and honors its valuable contributions Duncan has made to our city leadership. House mail service to the city.
Ms. Duncan, what did you used to have to do when you wanted to look up old records back four, five, six years ago, ten years ago?
That would be manually.
And it involved going to the basement of a building, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, it did.
Did it involve spiders?
Yes, it did.
Do we have a new place to do it now?
Yes, we do.
And does it have spiders?
Absolutely not.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Hopefully no bugs of any kind.
Departmental reports are contained in your packet this evening. Council, you are directed either to the administrator or department head in regards to questions you may have regarding those reports, and our financial activity report will be brought to us by Mr. Seifert this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring to you the financial performance summary for the month ended of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Beginning with the general fund, we have revenue recorded of thirty-two million, three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand and expenditures of thirty-three million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, and that amount is six percent under budget. We have a carrying cash balance in the general fund of twenty million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. And referencing the benchmark dashboards, we have a combined negative variance of three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Moving to the hospitality fund, we have revenue that is five percent over budget at two million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars with expenditures of two million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand and a cash balance at March thirty-first in the hospitality fund of two million, three-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand. And finally, in the stormwater fund, we have revenue recorded of one million, five-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand with expenditures that are currently five percent over budget with one million, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand and then a cash balance of three million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand. Be happy to field any questions you may have.
Council, floor is open for questions or discussion. Hearing none. Thank you, sir. We appreciate the update. Mr. Mayorman, administrator's report, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much, and I want to thank you for taking the time this evening to recognize our employees and our community members, that, young and old, that really kind of make the fabric of our community so strong, so thank you very much for that. A few updates for you. First of all, reminder that the Public Services Spring Cleaning Event will be April twenty-seventh from eight till noon. That's again, April twenty-seventh from eight AM till twelve PM. Join the City of Greer and our public services for our spring cleaning event. The event will be held at the Greer Recycling Center and will feature a drug take-back opportunity from the police department. So mark your calendars and more information on that event is available online. The platform at Greer Huddle will be announcing their grant recipients on May second. Graduates of the platform at Greer Boot Camp are eligible to apply, and the prize will be up to twenty-five thousand dollars to be divided between two winners. So that is, we're very excited about what the platform is doing and what it continues to do for business incubation in our community. Just by way of information, the staff is working on a public art committee. We are working to explore the creation of a public art committee. It would be a group of people, would include artists, non-artists, et cetera, to help evaluate where public art makes sense and in what form. The UDO currently, the new UDO currently allows for public art, murals in particular, but we don't really have a well-defined process by which we would vet any of that. So your staff is currently working through developing the bones of a public art committee and, of course, all the bylaws, et cetera, that would go along with that, but we will keep council apprised of that process and bring y'all into that process when the time is right, but I did want to keep you in the loop. And finally, well, excuse me, two other things. May third, May third, mark your calendars, between three and five, we will have an open house for our Berry Avenue building, where we have completed the renovations on Berry Avenue. Y'all probably came there, it's been, Mike, what is it, eighteen months ago now we did the engineering side of it, but we've completed all that work in the back, and so we will do an April, open house on May third, between three and five. And finally, I do want, you know, I'm excited about it. I think, I'm excited about it, but it's not anything I did. It is what this council has done and what David and his staff has done over the years for this city, but we just were confirmed today that we have a Moody's and an S and P double A rating. So our IPRBs that we, that y'all passed, both the twenty-twenty-four series and the twenty-twenty-five series, have maintained a double A credit rating, which is a high-grade investment level rating that is just as good as it can get. It's fantastic, but it paints a picture of our financial stability, but it also is reflective of years of wise use of funds. So all of this is hot off the presses today, but I would be remiss in not bringing it up, congratulating you and then congratulating David and his staff for all that work to get us here. So, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Administrator is available for questions or more information. Council, let's move to old business. We've got two items of old business to attend to this evening, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-four. This is an ordinance authorizing a finance franchise agreement. Mr. Seifert joins us for that conversation.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. When we brought this ordinance to you for the first time, the first reading last month, council requested some verbiage to be included in the contract which is attached as, excuse me, as Exhibit A to the ordinance in regards to placement of the lines underground and an assignment clause. We have worked with our city attorney and the attorneys from Lumos, and the placement of the communication lines, verbiage is a paragraph added, section five point one on page five. And then the assignment clause was added on page eighteen as item number I. It wraps page eighteen and top of page nineteen. If you would like to review that, we bring that contract back to you for your consideration for second reading.
Thank you, sir. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Action.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Who makes the final call on... They submit their plans for installation, and there's an area that they say they can't, it's not commercially reasonable to be placed underground? Who is the one who makes that call?
As I understand it, that would be under their control for commercially reasonable.
That's under the...
Their decision.
Their decision?
Yes, sir. As I understand it, from their language and the attorney, they take into account obstacles...
Yeah, I know, but that's kind of like the fox guarding the hen house, isn't it?
Like it would be in consultation, doesn't it? Like it would be something that both parties determine.
Well, it says, you know, five point one, David, that you pointed out, you know, it says that it can be reasonably expected to accomplish the desired action without a material increase in costs. So, I mean, are they looking at it, is that kind of how they'll be looking at it, through just a cost equation to say, you know, if it's cost prohibitive for us to go under the road, we need to go through the air? Is that a...
That's one of the considerations. In discussions with them, there are certain obstacles, obviously, through boring underground. They have DOT restrictions. There may be other infrastructure from other utilities in place that they take into account to determine what is commercially reasonable.
Yeah, but the, it's always cheaper to go overhead, so they could say, well, it's just too expensive to bore underground down Point Set Street, and so we've got another line running down Point Set Street.
I do think that's effectively what they're saying. If you continue to read B and C, it just says it's consistent with industry practices, which tells me they're going to be looking to what their competition has done and then kind of follow suit, and then it says, takes into consideration the amount of advance notice required to take such action, the duration, type of action, competitive, so competitive environment is the last piece that they say. So again, they're just looking at what their competition is doing and they'll just follow suit.
Five point two and five point three address the previously existing utilities. Five point two says if they're underground already, they'll go underground, and if they're above ground, they'll go above ground. So to your point about it'll be another line in this particular case, yes, but if the existing utilities are underground, they'll put them underground.
So what's the purpose of them even submitting plans to our engineering staff? If, you know, if they're going to do whatever they want, because basically that's what this agreement allows them to do. I mean, it just kind of cleans it up with the legalese, but they could...
That kind of normal procedure for most utility companies, if it's already aerial, then they go aerial. I think it's been a normal procedure.
Well, it has, and that's why we have so many aerial lines everywhere and so many, while we have the forest of old utility poles throughout the city. This is not what I expected. I thought we were told that this was going to be, before this, before this language was added, I thought that what we were told by the company representative is that the plans will be submitted to our staff for review, which is, to me, an indication that staff would have the ability to say, no, no, we don't like that, or you can't do that.
And that would go through the normal review process, yes, sir.
It's not consistent with what we, as a city, are trying to achieve.
The only comment I will add to that is the statement that he made when he was here was that their intention and goal is to go underground as much as possible. That is their desire, that they would try to only not go underground when it was, you know, infeasible to do so. And I would just add that, you know, at your discretion, obviously, we can take this back to them, the gentleman that was here last time was unexpectedly called away to Virginia this morning. He was intending to be here, but we can certainly, you know, address these questions back with...
So from an engineering standpoint, just a quick question. Somebody recently, AT&amp;T, I think, came in, did all their lines underground. Large connection boxes, some in people's yards and, you know, some in the sidewalk and that sort of thing, are those for public use or is that only for AT&amp;T's use?
I think that's AT&amp;T, right?
So this company would have to do it on the other side of the road or...
Within that prescribed right of way, correct? I mean, not, unless they obtain more right of way, I guess they would have to put it in that same right of way that all the other utilities are operating in.
Mr. Mayor, are you asking would there be the, would there be required utility boxes specifically for this fiber in addition to what maybe AT&amp;T had?
Correct. You wind up with three boxes in your front yard?
I don't know if that's, I don't know if they have to do that or not. I mean, I just know that the way this is written, I mean, if I'm the business owner and making this, yeah, it's always more expensive to bore underground than it is run overhead. And he did say that, I think their goal was eighty percent underground, but that's system-wide, not Greer-wide.
Yeah, I think what I take from this is they're just going to be consistent with what other providers have done, and I'll say this again, I said it last time, I really think we need some more competition on the fiber front and providing, you know, more options and services to the citizens of Greer, and so I, you know, I welcome this opportunity. It sounds like they're not going to do anything different from the other providers that have provided these same level of service, other than just create more competition, which I think is going to be a good thing.
And I think there has to be some out, to your point, because there's areas that we still don't have adequate fiber downtown, and I know part of that has come from the fact that, you know, there's an issue about boring under Trade Street and across intersections in Trade Street and ramifications and implications from that and boxes in the sidewalks now that are brick, you know?
And I understand, and I know that there will be times that it's either physically impossible to do or financially it's impossible to do, but there's no oversight from us. And this is different than the other AT&amp;Ts and other, because they, they're governed by the state, the state took that control away from us. And when I mentioned the forest of old utility poles, one of the things that drives that collection of old poles that need to be taken down is the service not provided by the owner of the cables, the power company, they move their stuff, the poles are ready to be taken out, but if you'll watch, these old poles will stay there a year, two years, or they'll just be there forever, and they still have your cable attached to it or your phone line, whatever, and they're not under any kind of deadline to get those down and gone. And I'm not, I'm not against the competition, but, well, they don't have any competition, is that correct? There's no fiber, so they're the ones that are, you know, they're not doing what their competitor is doing or not doing, they don't have one in town.
I think AT&amp;T just ran fiber in our neighborhood, and I think they're doing it in some select neighborhoods. I think what he was saying was they're going to try to make this a citywide project to make sure it just expands options throughout, and then, you know, about the aerial lines and different things like that, I would, I'm with you, I'd love to see all these things underground, it would look a lot nicer and cleaner and would be a lot safer. I just don't want to put any undue burden on this provider that we don't put on the others, and I agree, it's not really, unfortunately, it's not our call.
Right, we don't have that ability to do that. But I don't know, David, what is, is there a difference in their franchise agreement as far as dollars they pay us versus if they were under state control?
They are under...
I think what he was saying was they're gonna try to make this a citywide project to make sure it just expands options throughout. And then, you know, about the, the aerial lines and different things like that, I would, I'm with you. I'd love to see all these things underground. It would look a lot nicer and cleaner and, uh, would be a lot safer. I just don't wanna put any undue burden on this provider that we don't put on the others. And I, I agree, it's not really, unfortunately, it's not our call.
Right. We don't have that ability to do that. But I, I don't know, David, what is, is there a difference in their franchise agreement as far as dollars they pay us versus if they were under state control?
They are under state control. They follow the same state law that AT&amp;T does.
But they're not paying into what the state pays and says you have to pay into, are they?
Um, they, no, because it's, they're providing only the internet, and the internet's exempt.
Right.
And the only franchise fee that we are getting is $1,000 or something like that under state law.
I, I can't vote for it the way it is.
Well, it'd be interesting to see if they are competitive. You know, AT&amp;T does have a fair amount of, of, uh, fiber optics in the ground, North Main, for sure. It would be interesting to see how their pricing pans out.
What's the tenure of this agreement? Now, is it cancelable?
I, I do not remember immediately, right off the top of my head.
Hang on a sec.
Well, it's gonna be lengthy, because you're not gonna spend this kinda money.
Wasn't it?
The term is 20 years, um, with a 90-day party written notice for termination, uh, renewable for three additional 10-year terms for a maximum of 50 years. That is section 3 on page 4.
Now, on the, the assignment clause? Why are we even putting things in there like this? I mean, it says that the, the agreement may be assigned by, uh, grantee without city's written consent.
There are two parts to this paragraph. The first part is, um, for their specific assignment, if they just wish to assign the agreement to somebody else, to another company. That would require them, excuse me, coming to, um, council for that permission to do a direct assignment. Um, the, the second half of that paragraph is more in relation to their current business structure, where they are a sub, uh, company of other parents, and the parent levels change fairly regularly as investors come and go and buy assets of the companies that are underneath. So, the second part addresses that parent level change, to where they can assign it to their new parent. But in that agreement of purchase, that new parent has to sign a document that's provided to us that says they will agree and abide by this contract. And if they don't sign it, then this contract does not get assigned to them as the purchaser.
So, answer this, they, um, here's what I think. I think that this company, and not, not knocking them, I think what will happen is they'll put the infrastructure in-ground and get the system ready to go, and then they'll sell to somebody who's gonna operate it. So, what happens to that agreement at that point?
The purchaser must sign the contract to the seller, in this case, could possibly be, or would be LUMIS in this, in this case, the, uh, the document that they will abide by this agreement with us. If they don't sign that document, they cannot assume this contract.
So, LUMIS probably would not be the one who would market it for sale.
Right. It'd be their parent.
And then the, one of the parent companies would be required to-
Sign that, the, that legal internal document that they will honor and abide by the contract with, you know, that this is in front of us tonight. So, they would abide by all the, all the clauses in the contract with the City of Greer.
So, this covers wherever our city limits are, even into the future?
Um, it does not address growth, so, uh, by absence of addressing, I would say, yes, sir, that addresses city limits.
But they are subject to whatever our rules are when it comes to going into new areas?
That would go through the normal UDO process and-
So, if we, if our regulations require it to be buried, they would have to bury it?
Under the new UDO for a new area, yes, sir.
Now, how do you get that? I mean-
I'm, 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 I'm maybe speaking, you know, I'm not fully familiar with the UDO, but I know through the zoning regulations and, and new areas is where, uh, the utilities and, you know, get placed underground through that agreement process.
But if, let's say they do it south of 85, and we know there's lots of rock down there, and they say, it's too expensive, we're gonna run it overhead, although the UDO may direct them to do otherwise, we don't have the ability to say, stop.
I, I would have to assume that would go through the normal process for any subdivision.
But we're-
And that would apply to any utility going into that area.
But we're, we're specifically telling them up here is that, hey, if it's too expensive, don't do it. Right? So, that's gonna supersede the UDO.
Ashley, is there a variance if, if, and I'm putting you on the spot here, but from a UDO perspective, would, would, if, if in Mr. Airwood's case, and Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I ask, um, if, would a, would a variance be required if there is some geologic reason or some other reason not to be able to bury utilities? Would that, would that qualify as variance?
It would.
Hardship?
Um, the utilities are really only required to be underground, like, on the site, not necessarily within the right-of-way.
Okay. Okay.
But yes, that would be a variance.
Okay. So, it's within the right-of-way, it's not required to be underground? On-site utilities required to be underground under the UDO.
Right.
So, in this particular case-
Right. But, but let's just-
Then it, then it reversed back to this, the way the contract-
Which says, basically-
Which says that if there's some hardship, or there's some reason, some commercially, some commercial reason that they cannot do it within reason, then it will be above ground.
But they're the ones who decide if it's in reason?
Well, yes, effectively. I mean, we would have to have a compelling reason to argue that it's not, and then-
Well, the way it's written, I mean, they talk about financial hardships. I mean, well, my profit, my profit is gonna drop down by 4% by having to put all this underground here, so therefore, I'm in compliance with what the agreement says.
I think it says, though, that they're gonna follow industry standards, and I think that would be consistent with any provider that would be in the area. I don't think it'd be unique to LUMIS's situation, or AT&amp;T, or, or whatever. I think they would all be running up against the same issue and would have to make an adjustment.
Yeah, but we can't, but here's the thing. We can't control AT&amp;T, or Charter, or any of those folks. Our control comes here and, because it's not a good situation when you take control out, out of, from your hometown. And, and we've seen that with, you know, when the state gets involved a lot of times. And, um, it, it just seems right, like, it's too easy for them to say-
Well, I haven't seen the AT&amp;T or the Spectrum contracts, but I bet you they're the same way.
Well, but we don't have a contract with them.
That's what I'm saying.
And, and, and while I appreciate the argument, I think you made the point earlier that we are putting an undue barance of cost on a company that does the same thing as others that are operating in the city. It puts them in an unfair economic advantage to have to play to a different set of rules than everybody else that's providing the same essential service, uh, to some degree.
I would think they'd all wanna be underground and do it this way, but I mean, you know, if there's a boulder there, there's a boulder. I mean, it's gonna, they're all gonna run into the same issue, so, and I would think they'd effectively handle it the same way.
Final discussion or comments? Second and final reading of ordinance number 7-2024. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Second and final reading of ordinance number 18-2024. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain properties owned by Swafford Properties LLC located on Farmer's Circle by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of ML for said properties. Uh, Ms. Cotty, you join us for this information, do you, uh, I mean, for this discussion, do you have new information in regards to ordinance 1824?
Um, yes. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 15th and recommended approval.
Comes with a recommendation from staff for the purpose of discussion. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
No motion.
And a second.
Thank you.
Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to new business, the first of which is the first and final reading of resolution number 14-2024. This is a resolution to correct a Scribner's error in resolution 9-2024. David Seifert joins us for this conversation and to give us, uh, an overview of a Scribner's error. I don't think we've seen one of these in quite some time, so the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. When we brought to you resolution number 9-2024, uh, the original, uh, amounts that were allocated, uh, where we were, we were requesting a, uh, different allocation of 2021 lease purchase funds to be applied to, uh, different assets. And, uh, you approved that resolution, um, but when we had these, uh, numbers going to the attorney, the numbers were based on purchase orders, not an actual invoice. So, when we, uh, asked for reimbursement from the bank on the lease purchase assets, uh, they kicked it back out because the, and denied it because the amounts were not exactly correct. Um, and then in reviewing it, we, uh, realized one of the costs of an asset was switched with another asset. So, this resolution number 14 corrects, um, those amounts in the original resolution to the actual amount of the invoice, and then assigns the correct amounts to the correct asset.
Counsel, this is the first and will be the final reading of resolution number 14-2024. Uh, for the purpose of further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
No move.
And a second. Floor is open for questions. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, let's move to the first reading of ordinance number 13-2024, an ordinance to amend the City of Greer Unified Development Ordinance. This is ordinance 13-2024, and it's a request to adopt a package of amendments to the UDO as outlined in Exhibits A and B. Ms. Cotty joins us for this conversation. You will remember, we addressed this at our last meeting. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
No move.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Um, as you mentioned, we have reviewed many of these amendments during the work session and, um, the first reading that was tabled at the last meeting. Um, so I will go quickly through the, the amendments, except the ones that had a lot of discussion or we made changes on. But if you have questions or would like to, um, discuss, please feel free to stop me. Um, you do have a s- more streamlined version of the table that you had last time, um, which is, um, just a reduction of what the actual amendments are. The last version had all public comments, whether or not we were gonna make changes or not. Um, and so, this is just the actual, um, summary of amendments. So, the first, um, one, the topic had to do with site development plan review process, and staff was proposing to enact expiration dates so that, um, after a period of inactivity, um, they would need to reapply. The second topic was code enforcement, um, and again, this language was just mistakenly left out. Um, it mostly mirrors what was in our zoning ordinance, um, and comes at the direction of our code enforcement officer and the IPMC, uh, property maintenance code. Um, and then we also did add a definition for commercial vehicle, um, which is one of the top, um, complaints that we do receive, receive in residential neighborhoods. The third is the table of permitted uses. Um, we updated where vehicle sales and rental are allowed and restricted those to more auto-oriented zoning districts. The next section is signs. Um, we did move one reference, um, we didn't change it, we just moved it to a place where it made more sense. Um, we updated some allowances for electronic message signs, um, and made restrictions, um, or made things less restrictive for wall signs and monument signs. We also added setback references, which are standard, um, five feet from property lines. So, this section, landscaping, this was where the group had the most discussion. Um, so I did highlight in red the two, um, main changes. Um, you'll notice there are less amendments overall. We did take another look at some of the proposed amendments from Trees Upstate and Forever, Upstate Forever, um, and we did strike quite a few of them that, um, at the direction that council felt like staff wouldn't be able to enforce them. So, we did strike several of those references. The ones that we did keep were adding another source for allowed plants, um, adding a table for species diversity. We updated, um, just two to three, um, plants on the allowed and prohibited list, and then added spacing requirements for plantings. Um, those are all things that staff can look at plans, um, count, use tables, um, and can easily enforce. So, the two big changes, um, one, we removed the planting season reference altogether. Um, you may remember the first, um, suggestion was to add additional months and winter, um, to this language. After taking another look at it, it really just didn't make sense to talk about a planting season in general. South Carolina, depending on the weather, you can really do that year-round, and we felt like there are other mechanisms in the code, um, you know, if, if it dies, they're gonna have to replace it. So, there's no real necessity for dictating when they can plant. Um, so we did strike that. And then the biggest change, um, was removing the reference to heritage trees. Um, previously, we had made a suggestion to, um, reduce the width of, of heritage trees. We've taken another look at that, and we've, um, we're proposing to strike that language altogether. And those heritage trees, um, again, the best practice definition is those that are 60 inches or greater. We would just take care of those under significant trees, which were anything over 20 inches. We would now, it would be anything over 30 inches, so it is getting a little less restrictive. And then those would just have to be replaced, um, instead of not being allowed at all. So, those are the big changes for landscaping, and I do wanna pause for questions, 'cause I know this was the biggest discussion last time.
Thank you. I was gonna pause you anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you for proactively pausing. Uh, question, uh, 30-inch diameter breast tights, so they're saying we tag those and then you- 30-inch diameter breast height, so they're saying we tag those, and then you are having to replace that tree on that site, is, no?
Yes, mhm.
So it can, the tree can be, let's say you have a lot, and it has several of these trees right in the middle of it, so if you take the 30-inch tree out, then you're putting that same species of tree in the buffer?
Not necessarily. It would just have to be a tree that was more than 2-inch caliper and on the allowed plant list. And it would be, it wouldn't necessarily be one for one.
Oh, just a, okay. So it's, it's prorated?
Mhm.
So that if you've got 30 inches of diameter, and that tree needs to come out, if you place so many 2-inch trees in to replace that one, it's, it's a trade, it's the trade-off?
And that's what we have now, under our development regulations, right? Where you're, where you have to do a tree survey, all that.
It's what the zoning ordinance did have, and this is similar, yes.
Yeah, you don't have to replace it with a 30-inch tree.
No, I get that, but I, but it, but you're saying, so if it's 30, and then the 2-inch, the 2-inch tree does not count for the 30, you're saying 15 2-inch trees, and that, is it like a math?
No, so it's, it's, it's a minimum of four, and for each one, and it has to be a minimum of two inches.
Four replaces the 30-inch tree, minimum two inches.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So it's not quite like for like.
I actually see that in eight, I see that now that you're over your head, I'm seeing that, okay. Gotcha.
Can you scroll back to the, the commercial vehicle definition?
Absolutely.
I had the same question, thank you.
Sure.
I was thinking the same thing.
I did speak to Joe Holbrooks, our senior code enforcement officer, about some of your comments in the last round, and he did say that some of the F-250s or 350s can have a commercial plate, but they don't necessarily have to. And he did say that those wouldn't necessarily be considered commercial.
Well, they're considered a property-carrying tag, so... So if somebody wanted to have a bus, they can. They just can't carry people for a fee, that's when it makes it illegal.
Could you repeat that, sorry?
When our, in, in the commercial vehicle definition, if someone has a school bus, and they're not using it, maybe they take it for a tailgate to whatever college, but they park it in their driveway, they're not charging anybody for, to ride, but they don't charge fees, it's okay to do that.
If it has a legal registration, that is to the property owner, I believe, yes.
Didn't we, did we address campers when we dealt with food truck ordinance? Wasn't that somehow included in that?
A camper, like a recreational camper, or...
I guess it would be like an RV.
Sure. So residences can have one RV or camper, but no one can be living on it in the premises?
And it has to be parked off-street?
Yes.
Cousin Eddie can't come to stay for Christmas.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Not gonna be able to come this year.
You pull in your front yard.
Hats off to staff, I know that they have, they've, they've, they've worked hard on this, and I did receive a, a message from, from one of the organizations that was mentioned earlier in regards to the UDO and our work with the tree section, and I, I thought the explanation was, was, was valid, and, and, and I helped on that. One of the things that I think has caused us some consternation is that we simply don't have the staff or expertise in some regards to put some of these sections that were in, in this into, into something that we could reasonably enforce. And so it, it becomes a matter of enforcement sometimes, and I think that, that the organization understood where we were, and I described that this is indeed a, a, a living document, as evidenced by the fact that just in the first 60 or 90 days, we've already chosen to make some changes, and that I suggested that those will continue to happen in the future. And as our staffing and abilities change, so might some of our UDO ordinances and other things. So I think we're at a, a good point at, at this point where we are, and I suspect that we'll be having these same kinds of conversations over, over a, a longer period of time.
Mayor, let me say this, I'm for trees, you know, I don't wanna, I don't want us to go in and clear-cut everything and just plant grass, but with anything we do, we need to make sure we ask ourselves, why are we doing it? And I, I think that's the big, one of the big things we missed on this UDO, but as it regards to trees, you know, we need to ask ourselves, why are we doing that? Is it because we want it to achieve a certain look, or we want to achieve whatever? Because, you know, now, historically, there are more trees in the United States than there have ever been. Some of it is because of man, as far as the management of timber, but, and some of it is because of man coming in and removing certain things that used to be here. A lot of our area where we are now was a type of savanna, it was not forest. So we just need to ask ourselves why we are doing certain things before, that way it, it makes more sense.
Thank you. Others? Comments? Questions? Further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
First reading of ordinance number 20-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain properties owned by Linda Watson, located on Kissed Road from rural residential to suburban neighborhood. Ms. Cotty joins us for that conversation as, well, Ms. Cotty?
Thank you. So this is a rezoning request for two parcels. This is located on Kissed Road, immediately adjacent to the Chestnut Grove subdivision. This went through the annexation process, I believe about a year, maybe 18 months ago, for a potential charter school. They have abandoned those plans, and now there is a developer interested in doing single-family detached housing. So they are requesting suburban neighborhood zoning. This is the zoning map, again, it's currently rural residential, it is adjacent to suburban neighborhood, and then unincorporated county. This is the future land use map, it calls for suburban neighborhood. These are aerial views of both the west and east side of Kissed Road, and again, that request is to rezone to suburban neighborhood. Adjacent land uses are the Chestnut Grove subdivision, again, that is single-family rezoning, originally under the R-12 zoning district, now suburban neighborhood, and then unzones Bartonburg County, which are single-family residential with varying lot sizes, not part of neighborhoods. Staff does recommend approval, and Planning Commission did have a public hearing on April 15th, and they also recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I do believe the engineer is also here as well.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Are you available for questions or answers if, if necessary?
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
You said, you did say that this was approved previously for the charter school?
It, it was annexed in by the, the developer who was interested in doing a charter school, so when they annexed it in, they brought it in under rural residential, because schools were allowed in rural residential with a special exception. So now that it has been annexed, now this is a rezoning request.
Any, have they, have they made any plans about how many homes or town, I think it's supposed to be a combination of townhomes?
Um, it's actually all single-family detached, as far as I know right now. The project did go to Planning Advisory Cup Committee, sorry, PAC, a couple of weeks ago. Just by street density for the zoning district, they could do up to 157 lots. With cluster development, they could do up to 197, but there are two streams on the properties, one on the east and one on the west, and based on site constraints and what the builder is looking to do, they are proposing somewhere in the 92 to 97 range. And again, those are all single-family detached. And townhomes would require a special exception if they decided to go that route after, or if their plans change.
They'll be building homes on both sides of the road, and there will be less than 200, is that what you're saying?
They're actually proposing between 92 and 97, so less than 100, mhm.
Very good.
Anything you'd like to add to that discussion? Okay, thank you. Others?
Counsel, I'll share, got to know the folks in Chestnut Grove very well when we heard this before. They made some, some good arguments, shared some, some valid concerns, I think, so they weren't necessarily sad when the charter school decided not to move forward with the project, had an opportunity to be in touch with the folks in Chestnut Grove, they're actually very happy with what they're hearing about this project, feel it's much more in keeping with, sort of, what's already happened in their development. So they're happy, I'm happy. I think it's gonna be a good project.
Does the, is the annexation agreement with the cost per lot involved in this? And why is that?
There was not, because it was gonna be used for a school. So at this point, there is no annexation agreement in place, as there weren't gonna be any residential lots. If counsel were to consider impact fees in the future, depending on the timing of this, it could be subject to those, but it would just depend, again, on the timing of if that were to go into effect, and then when.
Has that potential been discussed with the developer?
Honestly, I don't recall. I've tried to warn several of them that it may be coming, but I, I can't recall if I've actually told them specifically.
So that happens after the fact, as each lot comes into the city, if the impact fees are adopted, is what you're saying?
Yes, if counsel were to adopt impact fees, those fees would be assessed typically with a building permit, so that would come after grading, after the final plat, and at that building permit phase. And again, if counsel wanted to consider impact fees, you guys would have that discussion during, you know, what projects that were currently in the pipeline, at what point, you know, certain ones would be grandfathered in or not, based on how far they were in the process. So that has not been discussed. That will be up to you guys, if and when that conversation happens.
I think that's a conversation that we have later, because I think it's gonna be in our best interest that, even though we're considering that, that, that we're using annexation agreements now, and I can see that there's going to be a, a time that we'll want to enact that, but there may be some that are in the process, and I'm not sure that it's gonna be fair at that point to involve them. So I think that this is a discussion for the administration and counsel to have at some point as we, we move forward towards specific action.
Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we have no items in executive session to consider this evening. That ends our business.